Hello, my name is Taylor Kingman. I'm president of the SISD Board of Trustees and I want to welcome you to our meeting this evening. I first wanted to establish that we have a quorum. Ms. Mizel Flint is gone today celebrating a religious holy day and Mr. Guyogus has some personal matters he's going to have to attend to and will not be here today either. But we do have a quorum. With that being said, I need to read our introduction for the meeting this evening, so bear with me. So, as president of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the recording of this meeting online or on our public access channel. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month and most, if not all, items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at our earlier pre-agenda workshop. As a member of the SISD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel items and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, we have a public comment item on every one of our meeting's agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item not on our action agenda or on our action item agenda, an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room prior to tonight's meeting should you want to speak on an issue. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules so you can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. The district's timekeeper will report and record the time. You will be notified when your time is up. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time and comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form you filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee, decision, or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Speakers with a specific complaint will be referred to district administration for information about the grievance process. If you already have a pending grievance being processed by the district, you will not be permitted to speak about that grievance during public comment. Also, please understand if you speak to us on an item not on our action agenda that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments since the matter has not been posted for discussion. In compliance with state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become part of SISD's permanent legal record. In order that the recording will adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cell phones. Again, thank you for being here and for your support of SISD. All right. We're now going to move forward with our invocation. Mr. Hernandez, who's senior pastor at Solid Rock Church and a contributor to our district and a supporter of our district, is going to give us our invocation. Thank you for being here.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we're so thankful that you allow us to live in this great community of San Angelo and to be a part of this wonderful district. Your God, whose men and women all across the board work tirelessly to provide a great education and opportunities for our students. Thank you for the hard work that they do and tonight, as we meet, or as a school board meets, Lord, and as they gather to conduct the business of the school, to recognize students, whatever might be on the agenda today, I pray that you would grant them wisdom and insight, Lord, as they make decisions that will affect our students and our teachers and our families. I thank you once again for all the hard work they put in every month, every week, every day, Lord, and the administrators as well. I just pray your blessing and your grace will be upon them and we ask you all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. I'm now going to ask our students from Fort Concho Elementary to come forward to help with our pledges. We have four students. We have Haven, Josiah, Kyle, and Chrislyn, and they're going to come forward and help us with our Pledge of Allegiance. Parents, if you want to come up and take a picture. Thank you, students and parents, for bringing your kids tonight. All right, we're going to move forward with our agenda. We're going to start with recognitions and Dr. Farah Gomez is leading our recognitions this evening.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, we have three recognitions this evening. We will start first with our TextDOT recognition. Mr. McLean, if you want to come now, you're welcome to do so. In honor of the Adopt a Highway program and passionate volunteers that support the program, the Texas Department of Transportation, TextDOT, calls for nominations for the 2023 Adopt a Highway, AAH, Volunteer Award for individuals that exemplify the program's spirit of Texas pride, community, beautification, and litter reduction and prevention. At this time, please join me in welcoming Will McLean from TextDOT to the lectern. Mr. McLean?
Thank you. Good evening, SISD Board and honored guests. Like Farah said, my name is Will McLean. I'm the Director of Operations for San Angelo District's TextDOT. Texas is a beautiful and richly diverse state. Its population is booming and parts of the economy are expanding. But all this growth has also generated additional environmental challenges. They say everything is bigger in Texas. Well, TextDOT maintains over a million acres, more than any other state department of transportation. Every year, hundreds of volunteer groups from around the state participate in TextDOT's highly visible Adopt a Highway program. The Adopt a Highway program is open to members of the community. So let's look at the Adopt a Highway numbers for the Lakeview High School Student Council, National Honor Society, and Spanish Club group. The group began participating in May of 2008. The group has picked up approximately 2,360 pounds or 1.1 tons of litter from their two-mile section of Highway FM 2105 last year. So over the past 15 years, that adds up to about 15 tons of litter picked up from 2105. The Lakeview High School Student Council, National Honor Society, and Spanish Club students are committed to keeping Texas beautiful. This brings us to why we are here, outstanding volunteers. And for the past six years, Ms. Lori Castanuela-Tiers has been leading this group of exceptional students in their efforts. She has a unique perspective. Her father worked for TextDOT in her hometown of Brady. She saw firsthand how hard her dad had to work out in the Texas summer heat and cold of winter to remove litter from the Texas highways. As a Spanish teacher at Lakeview High School, she has set an example for her students to give back to their community. She started a recycling program in her classroom for plastic water bottles and aluminum cans, challenges her students to keep the Lakeview High School campus litter-free, as well as leading these students in campus cleanups. She has provided them with an opportunity to develop leadership and organizational skills during the highway cleanups. The service that these students provide allows them to build experiences needed for applications for future student scholarships. Ms. Castanuela-Tiers and her students have gone beyond in their efforts to support TextDOT's Adopt a Highway program. At this time, I would ask that Ms. Lori Castanuela-Tiers and Lakeview High School Principal Zachary Ramirez to come forward, please. Mr. Medea, I guess on behalf of Zachary Ramirez, I would like to explain to you how outstanding of a teacher you have representing Lakeview High School. Her leadership and willingness to put her students first, her spirit of Texas pride, community, beautification, and litter prevention are the reasons we selected Ms. Lori Castanuela-Tiers as the TextDOT San Angelo District Individual Volunteer of the Year for 2023. Thank you for keeping the great state of Texas litter-free, and I have a plaque for you.
And Ms. Castanuela-Tiers, I know you have some other family out there in the audience if they want to come up and be in the picture as well. I think that'd be great too, if you want to get a big old family picture. I'm sure they've helped at some point.
A big congratulations and well deserved. Thank you, Mr. McLean and TextDOT for recognizing Ms. Castanuela-Tiers. Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, our next recognition is for SISD staff and their district-wide STEM efforts. So our staff members that are here for this next recognition, would you please just come up? San Angelo ISD is proud to recognize key staff members this evening that have worked tirelessly to align SISD's STEM instruction and educational experiences for all students K through 12. This evening, we recognize these staff members for investing their time and knowledge to align so we can meet SISD's mission and vision. Dr. Detloff, would you please come forward? As I call your name, you'll come and get your certificate and please stay up here for a group photo at the very end. So in no particular order, and I am a former first grade teacher in a different lifetime and we had everything ABC order, these are in no particular order. First up, we have Ms. Nikki Parker. Next, Mr. Brandon Lagone. Next, Ms. Jennifer Feck. Mr. Stanley Ratcliffe. Mrs. Lori Barton. Ms. Roxanne Fentress. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Lorraine Campos. Okay, we can get a big group photo. As they're getting together for a big group photo, this evening, we have further information about SISD's STEM program and our academic progress update. Once again, congratulations. If you guys will come around and shake hands. You too, you go and shake hands. Everybody shake hands. Congratulations, very well deserved, and we look forward to more later this evening. Our last recognition this evening is one we're very proud to speak of. We're recognizing Shannon Hospital, but we want to give you the context as to why. Shannon Hospital is a strong community partner for which we're grateful on many levels. Tonight, we talk specifically about their work with SISD with what has been known as our 18-plus program. Now, you see Ms. Tyner and Mr. Burrell here holding a banner, not just because they want to pose for all of you, but because you're going to hear us talk a lot with the changes this year and what was formerly known as 18-plus to what will now be known, moving forward, as San Angelo ISD Bridge. And that's where Shannon comes in this evening. They have worked directly with our program to provide our adult students with meaningful internships, several of which have developed into employment. For some changes for the program, our San Angelo ISD Bridge is still located here on Knickerbocker, but now that's the one single program in the building that used to be shared between PACE and the 18-plus program. The reason why it's the single program in that location is because of great growth, because of educators and great partners that have really developed this program to serve our adult students. I'm not sure who all was able to make it here this evening, so I'm going to call names and if everyone wasn't here, then... They're all here? Okay, fantastic. When I call your names, if you will please come up, stay up, and we want to get a big group photo. All right, first, I'm going to go out of order, so, Mr. Burrell, I'm sorry, I'm going to change it just a little bit here. I have to start with Leslie Deans. Leslie, will you please come up? Leslie is a San Angelo ISD vocational job coach who served the district to what I know over 23 years. So she is literally the boots on the ground. Please give Leslie a round of applause. Leslie, good, please come on. We'd like to recognize Shannon employees attending this evening. Ms. Tiffany Romfield, Tiffany, if you will please come up, from the culinary department there at Shannon. Larry Lambert, so Larry was able, that's what I was wondering. So Tiffany is our solo from the culinary, but Tiffany and Larry work jointly in the culinary and help a lot of our students in that area. And Mr. Luke Martin, is Luke here? All right, thank you, Luke, so much for coming. And then our adult students, these are your SISD products, these are your future-ready graduates, and they are our Y. This is what we do on a daily basis. So Caleb Melendez, come on up, Caleb. Colin Harris, congratulations, Colin. Now, some of these students, I think, Colin, you have the Shannon shirt, I can't really, yes, you do. You might see even their Shannon shirt that they have on. I see it, I got it, thank you. So, again, this evening, we will talk more about this program, but when we say it takes a village, it truly does, and that's one of the many blessings we have in San Angelo, our great community partners. So on behalf of Shannon Hospital, thank you so much for making our dreams a reality and creating future-ready graduates that are productive citizens in San Angelo. Let's give them all another round of applause. Y'all might have to come in a little tighter, it's like class photo. Okay, before you guys move, are there any other special program staff members that want to come up for a photo? If you do, you don't have to. Oh, Mom, Tracy and his hand.
And parents, if you want to take pictures, y'all, we can...
Yes, parents, y'all, now's your time. It's a whole group part, you're sure? Okay, so if... That's a best sidekick, Mrs. Crane. Okay, so this evening, we'll also be talking more about San Angelo Bridge, but we wanted to recognize all of these special individuals. So can you guys start our handshakes and go around this way right here?
All right, that concludes our recognitions. Thank you for everyone being here this evening and thank you, Farah, for, obviously, our programs that... Partnerships with our community, partners are, that's duplicate, but community partnerships are important, so appreciate all that. All right, we are going to move forward with our minutes. So we have minutes from our August 8th, 2023 pre-agenda workshop, our August 21st, 2023 regular board meeting, and our August 28th, 2023 special meeting to adopt the budget. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move for approval.
I have a second.
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindell and a second from Dr. Mills. Any board comment? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same. All right, five zero. All right, now we have public comments for topics not on the agenda of this meeting and we have no one signed up, and public comments for topics on the agenda of this meeting, and we have no one signed up for that either, correct? Fantastic. So, moving forward with the reports, we're going to start with Jason Henry and a construction
Tonight, I want to introduce RJ Lopez with Park Hill Architects, and he's here to update us on our Fannin and McGill projects.
Jason, you should have the presentation up and going. Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and board, it's great to be back out here. We have construction going on at both sites and it's visible and ongoing, which we're very excited about. I think as you drive by either campus or if you happen to have kiddos there, like Dr. Kingman, you'll be getting updates probably more regularly than once a month from them. Let's see. So at McGill, we have the notice to proceed that we received last month, which is getting the construction going. We've got building permits approved. We're having regular construction meetings every other week, and they're working to build the pad, which is just getting all the dirt set in the proper location where they can actually start forming foundations. Let's see, I think I've got, there's the rendering to remind you, it'll take some time to get there, but it's always nice to see. It's just dirt right now and some holes for sewer lines and such, but that's the end goal. I know it's a little hard to see on there, but they're working on rerouting the sewer line that was going through the middle of the campus, and so they've gotten that going pretty well, no major issues there. You can see in the pictures, just clearing out the dirt and rerouting that line. See construction trailer going. I think Lee Lewis might be trying to give Justice Construction a run for their money because they're moving pretty quick. It's been great to see. More pictures of just the dirt being moved. It'll seem like nothing's going on and then a bunch will happen and then, you know, there's kind of downtime and then all of a sudden, it'll start going up. It's just kind of the back and forth of construction and what you can actually see because when it looks like nothing's happening, there's still, you know, pipes going in the ground and dirt being moved around, of course. Fannin Elementary addition, you can see we've received a little more than 65% of the submittals, so before they can order everything, they have to submit to us to make sure that all the materials that they're purchasing meet our specifications. So they've submitted over 65% of that, which is good. That means they're pulling the trigger and getting things ordered as quickly as possible. We're meeting every other week and generating reports at each meeting. You can see, the site work was a little more complicated actually at Fannin just because of the large, you know, change in grade out there, so it does make sense that it's taken them a little longer to get to the point that they're at, but they've got the pad almost complete and hopefully you'll start seeing, next couple months, things going vertically. I would imagine about a month, you'll see some concrete and then a couple months after that, hopefully some steel going up, and that's when it starts to get really exciting. And then just a bird's eye view of what that addition will eventually look like, and hopefully we'll have kiddos in there by August of 2024, next year. Any questions on construction or status? It's really exciting to be here after all the process that we went through to get here.
Anyone have any questions? Well, I want to thank you for being here. I'm also going to, you know, once we get closer, we'll start holding you to those dates of August 2024.
(Laughter) Sounds good. Stay honest with you.
When it's just a dirt pad, it's a little concerning, but I'm sure it's going to go really fast soon.
Yeah, that's why we meet every two weeks, to try to stay on them and make sure we can hit those dates.
Perfect. Any questions for RJ? Thank you for being here.
Thank you, of course.
All right. Now we have student enrollment report for the third Tuesday of school, which was September 5th. It's usually Mondays, but Labor Day.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, student enrollment reports are compiled daily during the first 12 days of school year and on the first day of each week thereafter for the remainder of the year. Student enrollment reports are presented to the board monthly as a report during the regular school board meetings. We are excited to say that from the first day of school, every day through that first week of September, student enrollment increased each day as we watched it, and so we are currently at 13,159, which was over the projected budget amount for student enrollment to start the school year. So we'll continue to monitor that monthly as we go through and then we'll look for different campus anomalies to discuss and see if there are any, anything that the board wants us to try to identify with student membership as a whole.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions on student enrollment report?
I just, quick question. What was the attendance last year? Do you remember?
I, I just, quick question. What was the attendance last year? Do you remember?
At this point, last year, we were at 13,6.
We, we finished the year at 13,299. Right.
Thank you.
Dr. Gomez, your backup, update on academic programs.
Dr. Kingman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board, for this evening's update on academic programs in progress, we will always connect back to San Angelo ISD's Fundamental Five. So we're going to talk specifically about how we're committed to the overall student and their school experience. And I said tonight in the recognitions that we would further address our STEM efforts district-wide, and also our San Angelo ISD Bridge Program. So we will close with that with some things in between. So I have some other, the staff that were recognized up here will also take part in this. What we hope you see as we go through the short overview on the STEM program, and those of you that were wanting to speak can go ahead and come up, you know who you are. They did not all want to volunteer to speak, which we designed for choice, even for our adults. But what we hope you will see is how all of the efforts are aligned to the mission and vision of the district, with really that backwards design lens of producing future-ready graduates from high school and CTE, what that looks like in middle school. And finally, as our youngest learners enter our San Angelo ISD campuses, what we do from the beginning of their school experiences on all 17 of our elementary campuses. We also hope you'll hear what we're doing differently, specific to this school year. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to whoever's starting us, which I think is Mr. Lagone.
Thank you, Farah. We just basically wanted to just give an overview of the picture of success when you walk into a STEM lab or see our STEM program at any level. We want students actively engaged in hands-on inquiry-based learning experiences that makes STEM subjects come to life. And so we're so excited to see students exploring and asking questions and collaborating with peers, and it's just been a really amazing experience to see this in action. And so we want to continue that as we move forward into the year. Okay, so the elementary STEM experience, we've been fortunate to have one full-time STEM staff member at each campus, and it's been really spectacular to be able to meet with them monthly and really provide them with the tools to really ensure that our students are getting the best that STEM has to offer. And so, visiting in those STEM labs and seeing them in action and really seeing the planning and the support that we've been getting and using our resources from TEA and with TCEA and all of those, really just seeing that come to life in an amazing sense. And we're going to show you a video in just a minute that just kind of puts that all, sums that all up. They've also been gearing up and preparing to get into our cybersecurity initiative and participate in the competitions that we've got with ASU. So we've just got a lot of amazing things that are going on that we're looking forward to, and we're really just laying down the groundwork to really make sure that that takes off in a really special way. So, want to show that video really quickly here. Hit it.
Today, I'm going to give you some materials, and you have to work with your group to save our friend Fred.
Fred, call him in a plane.
What's our plan? Okay, what is, is that, are we all on the same page? Fauke's going to try to pick Fred up. Who can put the photo?
I thought I was going to put, I, I thought I was going to put, I didn't say a photo. Yeah, save her. Oh, come on. Oh, yeah, bring my sheet of photos. And, let go. Yes!
So, I've been working with Cyber, the Cyber Patriots program. Up until a couple of years ago, we only had representation at one school for the last several years. Glad to say this year, we'll have participation in the Cyber Patriot program for all of our secondary schools. And so I've been, had the privilege of working with robotics for the TCEA and the robotics competitions for several years. It really helps our students. The robot I have here, I thought I'd bring it. Some students I'd been working with for years, they just graduated. They both went off to university, both pursued engineering careers. One, University of Texas, and the other one, first student I've had that, as far as I know of, that went to a full scholarship for MIT. So, this initiative is like, super important. Our kids really need it.
I just want to wrap up briefly with our high school career and technical education programs and how we're providing that pathway and those connections from elementary when students move into middle school and then all the way into high school. The why behind a lot of what we do in high school is the fact that one of our top San Angelo industry partners hires more employees out of the country than they do locally. And so for us, the need for STEM education is necessary like never before. So we want to provide those opportunities for our high school students to be prepared for engineering careers. One way that we do that is through our Engineering and Robotics CT Program of Study. We plan to continue our Ethicon STEM 2D Symposium Series that we started last year. Through this partnership, Ethicon presented $40,000 in scholarships to graduating seniors last year, and I'm currently working with Ethicon to continue that effort. We also are looking to enhance our SME Prime partnership that we have with the City of San Angelo, Ethicon in Principal LED, in purchasing VEX robotics kits and offering opportunities for high school students to participate in robotics competitions. And hopefully, in the 24-25 school year, we're working with Ethicon to present our first robotics team through first competition. So lots of great STEM activities going on, and we just appreciate your support so that we can do all that we can for the students of SAISD. Thank you.
Can we give all of them a round of applause? It takes a lot to get up here and speak to all of you. It's one thing, they don't even pause when they're speaking to students. So as I shared, Mr. Maris, will you go to the next slide deck? And I believe Dr. Detloff is going to segue here in just a second. Our academic reports will always center around our Fundamental Five. As you just heard and saw from the video and from the talking points of those staff members, STEM education directly supports SAISD learner profile. Sometimes there can be a misunderstanding, so what is STEM? Are they just playing? It's absolutely not at all play. You saw students having to communicate, having to collaborate, having to use critical thinking, and having to be creators. And we have to provide those experiences before they get to high school, so they're used to working in those situations, and that's what employers want in the workforce. Which segues right into what we've spoken about previously through our academic updates over the summer. And what the public most often hears about is state accountability. While state accountability is one piece of how we hold ourselves accountable, we are committed to many, many metrics beyond a one-day test. So with that, we have a delay from TA, which Dr. Detloff will share some more, and then we'll continue the academic update over the data we do have at our hands to make the instructional decisions for our students. So, Dr. Detloff?
Thank you, Dr. Gomez, and thank you to our STEM leaders. That was an incredible display of recognizing all the ways our students are smart. So as you heard this evening, really, it's about a, student learning is about a comprehensive system of assessment. And, you know, a great example of that comprehensive assessment is, does the robotic pachyderm you just saw, does it work? That is how we assess learning in that particular venue and that particular project. So, learning looks different and is unique across the field in many, many different ways. One of the things that we want to kind of highlight tonight is, how in SAISD do we assess learning? What tools and mechanisms and structures do we use? And how do we really recognize that accountability in a, a scoring system or a grading system is important to us? I know that our school board, our leadership team, our campus principals, our classroom teachers, they want to do well in all assessment endeavors, whether that's a daily quiz, whether that's a nine-week unit test, whether that's an end-of-the-semester exam, whether that's the measurement of academic progress, that you'll see data in a few minutes. We want our kids and our school board wants to see growth and see our kids excel in every single assessment they take. Whether that's a robotic pachyderm, or whether that's the state assessment that is known as the STAR, we want to do well on every single assessment and experience that growth in student success. So, as you may have read recently, there's, public schools seem to be entangled in, in the political arena. So there's a lot of entanglement with public schools in the political arena. And I, I think all you have to do is pick up your favorite, you know, news media outlet, and you'll see that in Texas, in public education, as, as Dr. Gomez just referenced, the state accountability system, or A through F grading system as we know it, is based predominantly on the STAR testing, which occurs in the spring of every year. So recently, accountability ratings were supposed to be released to the public and to school districts on September 28th. That release has been delayed. According to statute, and this is one of the reasons, you may have read recently about litigation in the state of Texas on the accountability or A through F grading system. So a lot of school districts, including some of our peer school districts, Abilene, Amarillo, Hector County, are all joining a lawsuit to tell TEA and the commissioner and, and our state agencies that we need to know what the rules of the game are before we participate in the game. So you, again, when you read about this lawsuit or litigation, that is a reality, it's happening right now. That is one of the reasons that TEA, the Texas Education Agency, decided to delay the release of ratings. And you can imagine for a moment, again, we want to excel in all assessments in SAISD, but you can imagine if you're the Lakeview Chiefs this Friday evening, playing Midland Greenwood. And I had to defer to our Executive Director of Athletics Rodney Chant, because I wanted to make sure I had all the scoring criteria right. So, in a game, I could name four out of the five, but I'm going to try to name all five ways to score on the gridiron this evening. So our Lakeview Chiefs will play Midland Greenwood. And in that, they're going to shoot to score. They want to score well, and they want to score a lot, similar to our students in SAISD in the spring on a state assessment. We want to score a lot, and we want to score well. The difference is, imagine for a moment, that our Lakeview Chiefs, they don't know if a touchdown is worth seven points, three points, or 10 points. They don't know if an extra point is one point, three points, or five points. They don't know if a two-point conversion is really just a conversion. Maybe it's worth seven, or maybe it's worth one. Or perhaps a field goal may not be worth three. Or a safety could be two, four, six, eight, or 10. You choose. So they play the game, all students and our scholar athletes are trying to score, just like we do on a state assessment. And then the game is over, the state assessment is over, and we realize we don't know what the scoring criteria is. We don't know what the rules of the game are. But we understand that for the Lakeview Chiefs, the scoring indicators of that game will be released after the Thanksgiving holiday season. That is what we are going through now. According to state statute, TEA must release the scoring criteria by August 15th. That did not happen. So that is the reason for so many of our counterparts and peers to join the litigation and the lawsuit movement on accountability. And I'll be the first to say this, in SAISD, we have a lot of room for growth, and that is my responsibility, it is the team's responsibility, it's the campus leader's responsibility, to set up the conditions for success for our teachers. So we understand that we must do better on every single assessment we take. We must close the learning gaps, and I take responsibility for the gaps that we have. So we've got to align our system, continue to do better things so that we have students that are successful. We've also heard tonight the extreme success experienced by so many of our students. We heard that tonight, whether it's in STEM or other endeavors, our students are extremely successful. But how do we close those learning gaps? And how do we get better as a system so that all students experience that success? One of the things that, as we look at political entanglement, my hope is that we find a way to invest in our classrooms and invest in our teachers. It doesn't need to be connected to a voucher or another political affiliation or a political philosophy. We need to invest in our classroom teachers. As we know, we are understanding that a special session will be called on vouchers. We also, and that special session will occur in October. We also know that that is kind of integrated with the release, or at least speculated with the release of our state accountability system. The state accountability system right now, and we want accountability in SAISD. We want to be held accountable. We want to do better. There are many tenants of the state accountability system that I endorse and support wholly. I think kids, students, even adults, we have to learn how to take assessments, whether that's in certifications, whether that's your PhD exams, whether your plumbing certificate, we have to pass tests in life. So we're not against the accountability system. We just want to know clearly what the rules are. We had an educational organization in Austin study 140 school districts. They said 138 of those school districts, according to the new accountability system, will go down a letter grade. In our very own Region 15, we have about 46 school districts that Region 15 represents. We understand that the majority of Region 15 school districts will drop a letter grade. And in just a few minutes, you'll hear of some of the differences in the state assessment. The state assessment has changed recently, and we are not clear on what the scoring criteria will be. And this is based on last year's data. It's rear-view mirror data. And this is based on last year's data, it's rear-view mirror data. We want to take those action steps to move forward as a system and look at all the ways we can assess students to help close those learning gaps. As a superintendent and a taxpayer, I think there's great contradiction. I'm concerned that we are linking a voucher movement to providing additional pay and compensation for our classroom teachers. In my mind, those should be separate. As a taxpayer, and many of you know, I haven't mentioned the retirement word out loud, but I'm going to tonight. I'll be retired in December, but I will still be a taxpayer. And I, I think it's a challenge that I don't know if I want my tax-paying dollars going to institutions with all of our tax money that are potentially homeschool institutions, where we're not sure if the instruction is vetted or not. I'm not sure I want my taxpayer money going towards a religious or parochial school where perhaps that religious affiliation may not be one that I'm in alignment with. It's not just Christianity. So, I have a concern that our tax dollars are replicating dual systems, and that they're attaching a voucher to paying teachers to be successful for students. I think that should be separate. So, that is a grave concern I have with the voucher movement. And I know in West Texas and in San Angelo, we value our elected officials. SAISD, traditional public schools have an elected school board. Some of these dual systems, most of these other dual systems, do not have elected officials. So, I just commend our Board of Trustees for running, for elected office, for being elected, and for representing our kids in our school district. So, when we think about assessment, San Angelo, we have to grow and we have to get better, and that is my responsibility. However, we want to celebrate all the unique ways our students are smart. And tonight, we're going to provide you some of those action steps that we're taking to close these achievements and learning gaps. So, tonight, we'll talk about some of that. Just remember, Article VII of the state constitution provides for, to support and maintain a system of free public schools. And I believe traditional public schools do that. Why would we want to take money and have dual programs when we can invest that money into our classroom teachers for all kids, not just some, but for all kids to be successful? So, tonight, our curriculum and instruction team, Dr. Gomez, will talk about action steps we're taking to get better, provide you some examples in our state accountability system, and we'll move through. Thank you. I stood up to be succinct, but that didn't work too well, did it?
Thank you, Dr. Detloff. Mrs. Huddleston and Dr. Self, if you all would like to come up and join me. As we go into the next part, it's also important that we link back explicitly to our San Angelo ISD district goals, specifically student engagement. And an action step under this board goal is that we utilize district assessments to assess needs in order to develop individual learning plans. So, as you just heard Dr. Detloff say, while the state is delaying STAR information, we have students in our buildings. We can't wait. We have to be prepared to meet their needs and to serve them on a daily basis. So, as part of our commitment to looking at children and what they need academically, we have administered our beginning-of-the-year assessments, and we're fully transparent, as Dr. Detloff said. We do have areas where we must close gaps and make gains, but we want to share, kind of start with an overview of the data that we have now, as we cannot wait.
So, I'm just going to briefly hit the highlights of a few slides for you. First of all, you know, the STAR test doesn't even begin until the third grade. So, what are we doing for our students K1 and 2? And so, we have adopted a very well-vetted national assessment, M-class. And so, what we're showing you here is that last year was our first year, really, with fidelity to implement M-class testing. And so, last year, in the fall of '22, we tested our Kinder and our first grade. Now, this is the very beginning of the year. So, you're seeing kindergarteners, what that's saying is that 14% of the students who came to us at the beginning of the year in kindergarten had on-level reading skills. So, many of these kids were not in pre-K programs, come from places where maybe their parents did not read to them on a regular basis, and because it's our responsibility in kindergarten to teach kids to read. But what I want you to see-
Sorry, I'm going to interrupt because I just want to make sure I understand something. So, 14% are on grade level for fall kindergartners?
So, last year- Last year, in the beginning of the year, 14%. 14% were on grade level at the beginning of the year.
So, where kids would be expected to be at the beginning of kindergarten coming into-
That's correct.
I just want to clarify that for-
Yes, yes, thank you. So, then what we're doing is showing you that then this year, those same kids are now first graders, 23% began the year on grade level. So, we made 9% gains there with those students. But as Dr. Gomez said, and as Dr. Detloff said, we're going to be fully transparent here. We know that we had a real struggle with our first-grade students last year, and a lot of that had to do with the fact that we did not have a robust phonics program. The state gave us this last spring, finally gave us the list of what we could buy. So, TA gave us the list of what we could buy as a phonics program. We have purchased Amplify, and we're working through that. But as you see, we really didn't show any growth in reading from beginning of the year first grade to those students who are now second graders. So, that's one of our challenges that we're going to work with. We also tested math. So, we had an 8% per kindergarten on grade level. Those same students, as they began this year, 17%. And 11% down to 9% in first grade. So, it's a drop. Somewhere, our kids are missing some fundamental skills that we have to address.
I just had a quick question. What is a realistic goal? Like, what, I'm just, I don't have much frame of reference. What are we shooting? I mean, obviously, we're shooting for 100%, but what's a realistic goal that we're trying to get to as a district?
Well, so, we're not, so, beginning of the year to end of the year, we're trying to match the growth there. I don't know that I have a good answer for you on that, Dr. Mills.
I just want to make sure I understand your question. When you're asking a realistic goal for the percentage-
Yes.
-of students on grade level, that's how I understood your question.
Yes, correct, that's right.
So, the program itself determines the criteria for on-grade level by the standards assessed. And that's a very fair question, Dr. Mills, that we need to have further conversations with the board and Dr. Detloff as well. We want to provide the transparent data, though these are how students are coming, and why we've identified the areas that we have to be intentional on scheduling. As you've just heard Ms. Huddleston say, district-wide, we know we have to push in extra supports specific to second graders in SAISD right now to close gaps. We often talk about the STAR-tested grades, but what are we doing prior? Because from our demographics and our socioeconomic status, we have a great number of students who do enter our system below grade level, as identified by the state.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Gomez, Ms. Huddleston, Dr. Self, too. Post-pandemic, we are seeing more kids in these lower grades finally come back to school, but some of these kids in kindergarten 1 and 2 have not seen a classroom. So, obviously, the cohort that we have is, percentage-wise, is changing. We're getting to see more kids that haven't seen an educational facility in their lifetime. And now, kindergarten, first grade, they're coming back into school, which we certainly welcome, but they're obviously coming in at a lower level than previously. So, that cohort that we have changes, is changing at this point. So, the data's a little skewed right now because of the homeschooling, or the homebound students that didn't come back during the pandemic and now are coming back into the school system after those years. So, obviously, we see these concerns with this data, but this cohort, the cohort that we're dealt is changing to the point where it may skew our numbers, where we don't see gains for a year or two until we can finally get these kids back into school at an earlier time, like kindergarten. So, just not a good explanation, but it's a layman's explanation on a point from my point of view, that just signifies the importance of getting kids into school in pre-K or kindergarten or whenever we can to help them prepare for life in the future, especially reading and math. As we get them, they're going to establish that educational foundation in the lower grades because we see the foundation is built on these lower grades to help them succeed in the future.
Yes, sir. And I think one of the things as well is that we're spending more time than ever just teaching social skills to our young students. It's very difficult to start teaching them reading and math. They haven't been exposed to good social skills, so many of them. So, it's a challenge all the way around.
Also, Mr. Dindal, that, what you explained is another reason why SAISD expanded their pre-K services for students that just did not meet the normal criteria, but to more, because we know that students need to be in a structured school setting. And what sets SAISD apart from others is that we have certified teachers in our pre-K classrooms, teaching the youngest learners.
Just moving ahead quickly, then, when it comes to, again, as Dr. Gomez says, we can't just rely on STAR tests for data. First of all, it's very rear-view material. So, what are we going to assess students on? Well, for our third grade through 12th grade, and actually through 10th grade, we do MAP assessments, NWEA MAP assessments. And one of the things that's important about MAP is that those are nationally-normed tests. So, we're not just testing San Angelo kids against San Angelo kids or state, but this is nationwide data. And so, what we just wanted to show you here is that, and that says winter, but actually it's fall, that was a typo. So, from fall of '22 to fall of '23, and we did it by cohorts, that's what those green arrows pointing down. So, last year's fourth graders, their average RIT score for the district, 182.1. As they came in as fifth graders, that average RIT score was 203.0. So, a 7.5% gain. So, you can see all the way down, our fifth-to-sixth graders, our sixth-to-seventh graders. We do see an anomaly, and this is, it's actually not an anomaly, this is a nationwide trend that when kids go from eighth grade to ninth grade, our freshmen struggle. This has always been the case. And so, you can see right there, eighth grade, 201, and they didn't grow very much. I can't really see that from here, but, oh, it's still right here. It just says plus one, that's the part I can see. So, anyways, just showing you that we have made significant growth in reading among our older students, and then the math growth as well, from fall to fall, fourth grade to fifth, fifth grade to sixth, they're all trending up. And that's the important thing about this missing data that we have with STAR, that our students traditionally throughout the years, where we have excelled is in the domain two on growth. And we don't have any growth indicators right now. We have no idea what STAR is going to say in terms of the growth that our students made. But we have always made great progress on STAR in growth. And so, that's why, again, we're using MAP, we're using unit assessments, we're using all kinds of other data to track the growth of our kids.
Shelley, I just want to, sorry, I'm going to interrupt again, I apologize. But it is fair to say that our fourth graders from last year, if you look at where our fourth grader, our current fourth graders started this year, they were in a better place than fourth graders were in our district a year ago. Is that based on MAP data?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you for pointing that out. Yes, whereas last year, the average 182.1, this year, the average RIT score was 195. So, kids coming in better prepared. Yes.
And I know when we adopted MAP, which was maybe for, right before COVID?
2019.
There were certain expected gains based on cohorts of ages, and that, to Dr. Mills' point, because he wasn't on the board at that time, like, obviously, as an eighth grader, we don't see as much growth as we expect to see as a third or fourth grader-
That's correct.
...on the MAP testing. But I'm sure we can find those averages. My memory is, it was in-
Yes.
-in the younger ages, it was seven to eight, and in the older ages, it was three to four.
Yes. So, definitely with MAP, there are some growth charts we could give you that kind of has like a triangle where this would be how much we expected you to grow, and then whether we met that growth or didn't meet that growth. Yes, we do have that data as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Huddleston. And a big portion of that also correlates with the age appropriateness of, obviously, a young learner, learning how to read in kindergarten is going to progress much differently than a student that's been in the system. In addition to the delay in the way the state is calculating STAR, it's just a reminder that the test itself changed. So, even if we would have had full information from STAR by September 28th, as we were originally told, the two tests were not the same. So, just a reminder on the redesign of the test itself, from the testing going fully online to new question types, cross-curricular passages, and evidence-based writing. Now, that's deep into the weeds, so we don't expect anyone to know the ins and outs of all of that. But it is important, as we support our teachers and with the decisions that we make around professional learning, that we are giving them training and support in the new item types. So, we have given you a few examples because that can be confusing, even for educators who are in this field on a daily basis. So, we've given you an example of short constructed response for a fifth-grade example and a seventh-grade example. So, imagine a fifth grader on the day of STAR testing, they are given this question on their computer and then expected to type their response. And you can see in seventh grade, which a lot typically thought of writing in seventh grade, because prior, there were separate grades for the writing test, but now, as a reminder, there's writing throughout all grade levels. You can see the seventh-grade example. We thought that might be helpful for you. Then you have an example, when we talk about different item types of what the state refers to as multi-select examples. You see one for sixth grade, and you see one for Algebra I. So, in both of those examples, students are having to select two correct answers. Again, all doing so on a computer. For those of you who want to study and pass all the different new question types by grade level and content area, we've given you what the state says is very easy to follow, and there are one-page new question types by grade level and content area. Just kidding, I'm being a little facetious there, but you can see there were quite a bit of changes in the test itself. So, all of this to provide an overview, but as we have stated repeatedly, we're committed to making instructional decisions to meet the individual needs of all students. So, Dr. Self, let's talk a little bit about what we are doing differently to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our learners.
Absolutely. So, I think the next question that comes to mind is, what are our high-leverage moves as we make forward progress? So, again, centering ourselves in our big rocks, we have our multi-tiered system of supports for academic and behavior, our laser focus in special programs, specifically targeting special education and emergent bilingual, as well as a calibration of our professional learning communities across the district. More specifically, when we look at our elementary schools, as Mrs. Huddleston stated earlier, we are, or we have implemented a more robust phonics program, which is Amplify. And to kind of align with the emphasis of how important reading is, as Mr. Dindal pointed out earlier, it's the foundation for which we build everything on. We are ensuring that our elementary teachers are participating in reading academies- Um, we are ensuring that our elementary teachers are participating in reading academies where they learn the science of teaching reading. And we're also pushing in extra coaching support, um, through a, a literacy coach. Um, one of our, our reading gurus in the district, uh, supports our year two and three teachers out of the reading academy. So that work doesn't just stop as they go through it, it's continued and they're, um, implementing those practices that they learned, um, that really enhance reading. Additionally, across all levels, we are implementing coaching structures. I think Dr. Detloff touched on it earlier, we invest in our classrooms by investing in our teachers, and you do that through coaching and providing bite-sized action steps, um, impeding at the point of error so that, um, teachers can grow as well as students. And we also do that with our, uh, campus leaders as well. We know that the teacher pipeline, as well as the leadership pipeline, is not like it used to, and they're not coming out of, um, traditional higher ed programs and the numbers that we have previously seen. So we have to take the initiative to grow our own, and we're doing that, um, through a robust coaching structure at each level. Middle school, as well as elementary, you're going to see, um, halftime interventionist, uh, specifically to target the areas of reading and math. And each of our elementary campuses have a full-time reading interventionist as well. And in high school, again, the calibration and reset of professional learning communities is incredibly critical at this juncture as, um, we are doing a reset to really ground ourselves in those four critical questions. What do we want our students to learn? How are we going to know that they learned it? What are we going to do when they don't learn it? And what do we do and how do we respond if they already know it? So those are basically our high leverage strategies. It's a very high-level overview, um, to make a forward progress for students and our teachers and our campus leaders.
Thank you, Dr. Self. The very last page in your folder, there's not a separate slide for this, but we want to wrap up, uh, connecting back to San Angelo ISD Bridge, when we had the students up here and we had Shannon as our community partner. So we think it's important that we always bring it back to the commitment to all students. Uh, we know the mission to create future-ready graduates. And so as we work to really educate, uh, the community on San Angelo ISD Bridge and what transition education is, wanted to close with just this single one-pager and really, um, talk about the importance of the program providing vocational experiences, community connections, and transitions, where employment assessment and evaluation, resume writing, interview practice, roundtable discussions, job applications assistance, onsite tours, meal planning and preparation, transportation planning, self-care, study skills, time management, problem solving, and communication guidelines are all key principles taught as we wrap up with our adult students with disabilities so they can be productive citizens because that's all of our goals. And there's a whole list of community partners that help us make that possible, not just Shannon. So it just shows how each and every student is important. And that does conclude this evening's academic update. Do you all have any further questions at this time?
Any board questions or comments?
I don't have a question, but of course I have a comment. I would like to thank Dr. Self, you, and Ms. Huddleston, because as we see, we, we do have a lot of work, and these charts that you showed us, to me, prove it begins the first day they walk into a building. Our kindergartners are a little behind, and so I used to say it's like a tumbleweed in Texas, and it just keeps building and building. And I appreciate the work that y'all are doing to, um, to, to grow our kids, and it is a challenge. And I think, um, I'm sure people know this, but when you're a teacher in the classroom and a kindergarten teacher, you have a child that doesn't know his ABCs, a child that knows them all, it's, it's a struggle, and it is challenging, and it is exhausting. And, um, you know, same thing as the STEM program, we watched that video, the energy it takes to engage all of those children. So, um, we, I, I know we support that and we see the importance of the growth and the constant looking to see where our kids are, because if we don't, then we'll lose them. And we, um, way back in my day, you know, I went to a training, if a child is one year behind, it takes them a year to catch up. If they're two or three years behind, they never catch up. So we have to be very intentional with each child. So thank y'all for the work that you're doing, and I know it's tough, but we, that's our job.
Mrs. Duncan, we appreciate that and definitely know that, um, the real thanks and gratitude goes down to those classroom teachers that are in the trenches every day, to those campus leaders that are creating those conditions, and we're blessed with great people in SISD, we say it all the time, from curriculum instruction to multiple departments that are there to assist, but really comes down to what happens when that classroom door is closed and that teacher is working with those students. We also thank the board for allowing us to have staff designated to close the gaps. You all approved the addition of STEM staff at every elementary campus. We know that shortages, um, are real. We still have two unfilled positions, uh, but they are posted. If you all don't support that, we can't push in the extra, because when you ask a classroom teacher to teach all the content that the state says are required under the teaks for their grade level and do STEM on top of that, their plates are already so full. So that is because of y'all's support and also your support of reading, um, and math interventionists, which we just refer to now as interventionists, we don't specify the content area, but we wanted you all to know that they provide the extra assistance in both content areas. So thank you. Anyone else?
You know, I'm going to say something. So a couple of things. One, with the Bridge program, we'll go there first. Obviously, there are, I think, kind of 14, um, supporters of this, and just seeing those students at Shannon, uh, the energy and the attitude that our adult students have, working day in, and the impact they make and the smiles they have for patients and student and other providers, um, it's real. And so I, that's a great program, and I just want to thank everyone who's been involved in the Bridge program, and not just Shannon, obviously, ASU and Russ Street and Walgreens and North Star and Happy Trails and Gandy Inc. and Wyndham and The Carriage and Meadow Creek and the Pregnancy Help Center, did I say Happy Trails? YMCA and Meals for the Elderly and the Food Bank, Country Valley Food Bank, and, you know, there are a lot of programs that are helping us, and, uh, I think that's huge for our community and for our, uh, kids. So that's one thing. Two, just to mention, um, Dr. Detloff, for people watching, mentioned a lawsuit that some of our peer districts are, um, uh, joining in against TEA. As a board, what we have decided is we have one really important job right now, and that's to hire our next superintendent, and so we are not entertaining, really discussing that at all, um, because we want to make sure our focus is on, um, hiring the right person to lead SISD. And so, um, just if you're watching this at home or you're wondering what in the heck was Dr. Detloff talking about, lawsuit, is San Angelo ISD going to sue the state? Like, what we're working on is hiring a superintendent, and so I just wanted to comment on that. Third, I want to echo Mrs. Duncan, um, and appreciate the work that Dr. Gomez, Dr. Self, Shelley, and the rest of the district are doing. As a board, we've always worked to make sure that we're embracing and encouraging student success, and we've worked to try and provide, um, funding and policies that, um, allow for our classroom teachers to have that impact, because if kids are succeeding in something, um, they're going to want to succeed in more things, because it's a great feeling. And so we want to continue to work to make sure that our teachers, our principals, our administrators, um, that we've, one, as a board, we find ways to help improve that support we're giving. We know that some teachers are coming in with alternative certifications now, not the traditional track for, and they're doing a great job, but we as a district, um, need to figure out how to support that, and then as a board, we need to figure out how our policies and the money we have, um, goes to the right places to pull, as Dr. Self said, the right levers. Um, and we need to make sure that, um, whether it's interventionists or thinking outside the box, that we figure out how we're going to do that for the next five, 10 years, because this isn't going away. We have to make sure that not only our kids who are coming at, you know, what was it, 11% of our kindergartens are on grade level this year that met at the beginning of the year, we have to figure out how to support those kids, and we also have to figure out how to support those 11%. We got to make sure that every kid in the district, and that's a hu- huge disparity, um, but we got to make sure that we're supporting each one of those kids, and we have to figure out how to do that with, um, tight budgets and inflation and increasing costs and everything else. And so as a board, um, I know everyone on the board and, um, is committed to thinking outside the box to try and figure out how to do that, and so, you know, we're going to keep working to try and come up with a plan, um, that continues to support our teachers in doing that. We appreciate everything that each teacher is doing and that all of y'all are doing. So, thank you.
One last comment, Dr. Keeman, sorry about that. Uh, Dr. Gomez, that we, we talk a lot about the STAR and the assessment. The assessment itself gives us some sort of grade which, which we own up to, but however, the, the STAR does give us info on different areas that are, that our students are, uh, needing some help in. It also helps us assess some of the programs that we have in place that maybe are working well and some that aren't. And so the STAR does give us some valuable data, uh, in, in, in the process of taking that test and identifies our some student groups out there, uh, particular students or, uh, populations that are struggling or are succeeding because of something that we are doing or we are not doing. So, uh, we, we do value the STAR data and the, and the, uh, the information that it does give us, because it does help us in, in moving the, the needle and making these students, uh, better prepared as we, as we move forward. So, uh, regardless of the grade, um, the STAR does give us some information that we still use to make students' lives better in the long run, so.
Yes, sir, we completely agree. We, we just know time is of the essence when students are in our buildings, and we must maximize every minute we have with them. So, thank you for that.
Sorry, one more thing. I am glad, though, that we do have the MAP data, because otherwise we wouldn't have, we still wouldn't have the state data from last year to really figure out, I mean, we have some of it, obviously, but not, we don't have our growth data.
Correct.
Yet, and so we wouldn't know, so I'm glad that we do have some form settings that are allowing teachers and principals and administrators to make decisions to help with that, because, I mean, otherwise, like you said, it may be Thanksgiving before we figure out how we did in May.
We do have, we just received, and we're pushing this out to campuses, a new template that Lead Forward, uh, released, because you're correct, we don't have, um, very much STAR data other than domain one, but this template takes their domain one, uh, results and connects it with their BOY MAP data to give campuses and teachers live action plans. So down to individual students, so that is a benefit of having multiple measures of data and not relying on one single measurement.
Dr. Gomez, BOY, beginning of year?
Beginning of year, yes, sir. Sorry for the acronym.
All right. Thank you. Now I really am finished. Thank you, Dr. Gomez. All right, now we're going to talk about partnerships with Good Fellow, and we're doing, you going to talk about Purple Star? No? Okay, nothing on? All right, next month, we'll do more with partnership with Good Fellow. Moving forward, we have consent items A and B. A is considered donations. I do just want to point out that we have two donations. Uh, one is for, uh, Central High Texans, um, portable speaker system, but the other one is, uh, for, from Atmos Energy for, uh, books for all of our third graders, right? All of our third graders, Molly? The Atmos Energy, all third graders. So Atmos Energy made a donation that will purchase for, um, all third graders in SISD to be take, able to take home a book. So I just wanted to point that out. Do I have a motion for consent items A through B? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Dr. Mills, uh, for consent items A through B, which is considered donations, and then consider superintendent recommendations, uh, which there were three for, um, this contract recommendations. Any board comment? All in favor? All against, say the same? Perfect, passes 5-0. All right, we're now going to have Bill's accounts and financial statements for August of 2023.
Dr. Keeman, a move for approval?
I have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dindal Mills Show. We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a, uh, second for, from Dr. Mills for the Bill's accounts and financial statements of August of 2023.
Dr. Keeman, just a note to those watching on Channel 4, all of these reports we're, we've reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting, uh, a couple of weeks ago, uh, including, uh, entries to our checkbook. All of this information can be, also be found online, uh, under an accountability tab at the SISD, uh, uh, website. And, uh, anybody that would like to review any of that stuff, again, uh, it's the same stuff that we saw last week, the week previous, and it can all be found online at sisiisd.org.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Again, say the same. Motion passes 5-0. All right, we now have the approval of the quarterly investment report ending on August 31st, 2023. Do I have a motion for approval of that?
Motion for approval of quarterly investment report.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion, Dr. Mills, and a second from Mrs. Royal. Do I have any board comment?
Dr. Keeman, this all, this report was also reviewed at our pre-agenda meeting. Just shows that the district's total investments, uh, as of the end of August 31st, 2023, fiscal year 2223, were $75,668 and some change, and the total interest that was gained for that fourth quarter was $977,317 and some change. So this, this also is a comparison report from, uh, last year to this year.
All right, all in favor, say aye. All against, say the same? All right, motion passes 5-0. All right, we're now going to bring up, uh, Jason Skelton to consider class-size waivers for '23, '24?
Dr. Keeman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, thank you for allowing me to come up here. Every year, we, uh, have to discuss class-size waivers. So from the day one, we take the enrollment reports, and, uh, we look at those all the way down to the class and look at the, uh, the ratio, student-to-teacher ratio, 22 to 1, and as kids are coming into schools and they're going into the classrooms, we're making adjustments if needed, if we don't have enough class to fill, if we need to, uh, split classes, do things like that. So once the dust settles, kind of in this mid-September time, uh, we, we start to see which classes, uh, are still over the 22 to 1 ratio. And so, um, the district pursuant to Texas Education Code 25.112, each district in Texas is required to conduct a class-size enrollment survey from kindergarten through fourth grade. If the class extends over the 22 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio, the district must submit a waiver request to Texas Education Agency after receiving approval from the local board trustees. So in SISD, we have 17 elementary school districts, and in those 17 elementary, kindergarten through fourth grade, we have 250 classes. Of those 250 classes, at nine campuses, we have a total of 19 classrooms from kindergarten to fourth grade that are over the 22 to 1 student-teacher ratio. And so, uh, we're asking that the district submit a waiver, uh, with your approval to request, um, well, submit the waiver request in accordance with the Texas Education Code 22.11, 25.112.
I just, I just had a question. Are these overfilled classrooms, so to speak? Are they from unfilled teacher positions? Is that the main reason? Is that the main reason?
Not necessarily. You'll, we'll have a, let's say, we'll give you an example. Let's say Bonham Elementary has four classrooms. Three of them are full, 22 to 1, but one of them has 23 kids. And so that's kind of, that's where that is. And it's just the student-to-teacher ratio, not necessarily with unfilled classes. We do have long-term subs in those classes, in those classrooms until we get those filled. But this is just where the kids are and how many teachers are allotted for that classroom. So if you think about, we look at, when we do our averages, we'll say if you have 66 kids in third grade, we're going to allot three teachers for that. Some kids have, some classes have, or grades have 67, 68, 69. But once we get to a threshold, we then throw another teacher in there and it reduces the classes below the 22 to 1 ratio.
Got you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So what's the most a teacher has?
K through, K through four, I believe we have 24 in one classroom, with 23 in the other classroom.
What's name's called, Dr. King? Excuse me, Dr. Skelton?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we, this is a waiver we have to do every year. And when we look at our elementary schools and the sizes of our elementary schools, when we have some elementary schools with only two classes per grade and even our biggest schools, sometimes only four classes per grade, there's going to be, this is kind of just one of those areas where we're going to have some classrooms at some campuses that may be at 18 to 1 at a smaller school. But then a larger school may have two or three classrooms at 23 to 1. And we, unfortunately, we don't have a way really to make that, can't move those kids around to fit perfectly. There's too many kids that, to have one camp, classroom of 30 at that one campus. And so that's just kind of what we have, the game. We have to play with the numbers to get, it's not a game, but the reality of our smaller elementary schools.
Correct. Now, one of the things that we do provide for teachers that are on that overage is an extra stipend. So if you, if your class is over that 22 to 1 ratio in K through four or 25 to 1 in fifth grade, we, now, fifth grade on up, there's not a, there's not a cap. But we've set as a district 25 to 1 ratio for the fifth grade. We do provide an extra stipend for the teachers per semester if they stay over that ratio. That's something that is not required by the state, but the district does provide for teachers in this scenario.
Any further board comment, or Dr. Detloff?
Yes, sir, Dr. Kingman and Dr. Skelton, I just want to thank you and your team and others for, I guess, implementing that stipend. You know, I was in your position for six years coordinating the classroom ratios. And every single year, we had classrooms at 24-23. And that was back from 2009. And then you look at adjustments. I think, you know, kudos to our classroom teachers because they also want to keep kids in their classroom when they start school. So they understand that, you know, that classroom culture is critical and they want to keep kids with their peers. But occasionally, we do have to move students to balance out classes. But I just appreciate the board and human resources for providing that additional stipend. That's a, really a post-COVID stipend. And it recognizes the additional work it takes for an extra amount of kids in the classroom.
Any further board comment? All right, do I have a motion to approve the class-size waiver as presented in accordance with TEC 25.112?
Dr. Kingman, I recommend approval of the class-size waiver as presented.
So we have a motion from Mr. Dindal, I have a second?
I have a second.
Motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mrs. Duncan. Any further board comment? All in favor, say aye. All against, say the same? Motion passes. All right, we are going to need to go into executive session for just a moment. That concludes our meeting's action items. We're going to go under Personnel, right? 551.074, which is Personnel Matters. Just, our announcements, just so that that's done when we get back. TASB convention is this week, September 28th through 30th. Board will be going to that. We have our finance pre-agenda workshop on October 10th. And our regular board meeting is scheduled for October 16th. And we'll be right back. We are back from executive session. We took no action and we took no votes. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.